Good morning. I'm going to bring budget meeting number three to order. And I want to thank staff and management in advance for their due diligence on the budget. I want to welcome all of the citizens who are here or viewing us online. And just as an important note, the mayor hopefully will be joining us remotely. She is still with her family, celebrating the life of her brother who passed recently. Also, another footnote, Councilman Martin has an important phone call that he needs to take, so he will be leaving the meeting. And if at that point the mayor is not online, we will no longer have a quorum, and therefore will not be able to proceed. One last note, I want to thank my colleagues for all of their hard work and for their adherence to the template so that we can move forward without undue discussion, while still posing the pertinent questions. The mayor has asked us to focus, presenters to focus, on staffing needs, staffing requests, equipment and stock, and to make sure that the presenters highlight their critical needs within their department. So that being said, I've also entered into the public record a list of administration deliverables in quotes. These are items which have emerged in the first two budget sessions, which the administration has agreed to research and provide data. So for example, mileage on vehicles, what I like to call the burn rate, the amount of unexpended funds in the budget, what that number is. We've asked for healthcare cost share ratios. We've asked for the personnel policy and a review of the merit system, and so on and so forth. There are seven items. Management has a copy. The clerk has a copy. And rather than spend time on items which are already in the public record, we're going to move forward. Mr. Kelly, do you have any opening remarks?
No, sir. We're going to hop right into police today, and then all the public works.
And I'll say, welcome.
Excuse me. And after that, that should wrap up everything in general fund. So after we work out a few little things, then we can...
My goal in life is to have the trains run on time, Mr. Kelly.
Yes. So we have the police department in front of you. You had a cover sheet, talked about the staffing. This is sort of an overview. Excuse me. One of the items that you had is use the ARP funds. They're listed here. They show where they are. So we'll have the chief go through things. This department, as you know, has been sort of short-staffed, so you'll see some unspent monies and benefits and salaries. That's been one of the discussion items. So you will, it does reflect that, and those numbers are shown here in the budget presentation. But we can go through this, pick up the large items, explain the staffing, the positions that he's asking for. And then you have the vehicles. There's some replacement vehicles that meet the criteria. And then there are some new vehicles to go along with the new positions. And as we've been saying the whole time, if we don't get the new positions, then those vehicles and items aren't purchased either. So we'll just reflect that, and we can get started. Chief, would you like to talk about your staffing people?
Okay, so concerning the staff that we're requesting, laying the groundwork for the patrol division. Currently, there are four patrol officers for four different shifts, which that's a total of 16 patrol officers for the police department. And then, of course, you know, normal day response for service is, you know, ranges from property crimes, parking violations, to violent crimes. So that's our existing personnel specifically related to patrol. These two additional patrol positions, I know we're asking for three, but these two additional patrol positions that we were asking for, I'll give you an example. We've got today, two shifts work today, day shift and night shift. One of these new positions would come in at 12 o'clock at PM and work till 12 AM. So we call that a mid-shift or a peak shift car. So they actually covered the peak times, you know, during a shift. So we're not staffing four different shifts, you know, with four different officers. We're taking two officers to cover four shifts. So that helps, that will help out with the response times. That will help out with coverage for the town. So that's kind of laying the groundwork just for the patrol positions. So, and I'll continue if you would like. So I know that our calls are going to increase, you know, over the next few months, our calls for service. And I'd like to pose an example for you guys about what the, during the day, you know, what these police officers that we have here are challenged with. So just last week, we had a traffic accident out on Middleton. And of course, that's across the bridge. And that required three police officers to respond to that call. One police officer to work the actual traffic accident, and then two police officers to direct traffic because 211 had to be shut down. So what does that mean? That means that there was one patrol unit left on the island. So you have administrative staff during the day, and you also have the investigation staff during the day. However, that's a delayed response. That's not actual patrol units patrolling the neighborhood. So that is, that's just one example, and I know that that does not happen frequently. However, that in the future, that is going to happen more and more and more across the bridge or off the island. So, but let me explain to you guys what does happen on a very frequent basis, and that's arrest. So when an Oak Island police officer makes one arrest, the Brunswick County jail is 14 miles away. So if you Google that, you weigh it, whatever, that's 25 minutes one way traveling just to take somebody to jail. Then you're going to have about an hour to an hour and a half processing time if you're actually lucky and the jail accepts the inmate. So then you've got your travel time coming back. So one arrest that an Oak Island police officer makes is about two and a half hours that that officer is off the island. Now arrests occur every single day. And I know that we're in, you know, we have critical staffing levels right now. We have Major Cook made some very needed changes over the past few weeks, you know, to supplement our patrol, because our patrol is, of course, you know, the face of the police department, the backbone of the police department, because they're constantly, you know, constantly responding to calls for service. So, and there's also other items that the officer, not each day, but we've got beach patrol, you know. So you've got one or two officers that are assigned to beach patrol, just like the past holiday season, Easter season. So we had Friday, Saturday, and Sunday that we had an officer that was on the beach. So that, once again, takes a person off patrol and puts them on the beach. So you've got about seven hours each day. We logged 21 hours over the Easter holiday for beach patrol. But once again, that takes an officer, that takes an officer off the street and then puts them into a special assignment. So I think with the two patrol officers and the call volume that we have, and also the anticipated growth that is coming off the island, I think that two officers is critical at this point. I think it's critical for our town to be able to provide those police services at the very highest level that we can. And in 2021, the police department responded to 171 calls off the island. So that takes, that takes a patrol officer, of course, one or two, depending on the call, off the island. And we have, you know, we, like I said, we have four officers running on each shift. So that's one or two that is being required, and sometimes three. If you catch a domestic call, you catch a violent call, it may take a response from the police department and also exist at, you know, our surrounding agencies just to back us up. And one thing that is very near and dear to me is the officer safety aspect of this. So I know that this, I know that this town is a tourist destination. I understand that. However, I need to tell you that there is violent things that happen, violent acts that happened on this island over the past few weeks that require personnel. And we have to have personnel to address those issues. About three weeks ago, we had a barricaded person that barricaded themselves into a shed and started firing rounds from a high-powered rifle. That required, that required a response from the existing personnel, also people that was off-duty, required them to come in, and also a SWAT team response from the sheriff's department. So we have, that is continuously going on. Another example is that one of the police officers conducted a traffic stop about two weeks ago, removed an AK-47 rifle from the vehicle, along with drugs and money. So we have that element on this island. And I think with these two additional officers that we are asking for, I'm not sure if we can prevent it, but we can certainly, that's a step in the right direction to address what's going on here in the town.
With your permission, Chief, let's pause there, and we'll take some questions. I'll begin then. First of all, I think that our priorities, although we have multiple, we have a plethora of needs and wants, but our priorities need to be centered on public safety and public service. And to me, that has to be the story of this budget. So I have a slightly different kind of question for you, because this has been an issue in the past. I just want to make sure that you're thinking about it. So if you had two additional patrol officers, and you're able to tier the shifts, so you're covering peak, right, and you're fully staffed in the peak, what does your command structure look like, let's say, at night?
Okay.
Who's in charge of that peak period?
Okay, so the ranking structure for the entire patrol division is that you have a patrol lieutenant, and he supervises the four shifts. Each shift has a sergeant who runs the shift. If the sergeant is out, there is a corporal that stands in and assumes that sergeant's responsibilities. So we do have those, the peak shift would report directly to either the sergeant or the corporal.
So assuming we augment your patrol, you're comfortable with your command structure? You're going to be able to cover an emergency?
Yes, that's correct.
Like the, well, it wasn't hostage, the barricaded situation. And by the way, compliments to Assistant Chief for the way that was handled without any injuries to, first and foremost, to civilians and also to our officers. So I think that was good judgment there. I have questions about other things in your budget. Any questions about personnel?
Only question I have, Chief, and just to remind everybody. Mr. Kelly, or Frankie, how many years has this department run shorthanded?
Yes, sir. Just to kind of put it in perspective, in 1999 with the towns combined, Gopin and Long Beach, there was more officers on the roster then than there are now. And the town has done nothing but grow since then. And the police department has lost officers over the years due to budget issues, just officers leaving, things like that. We have operated short-staffed for a very long time. It seems like every time we get full, something happens. So it's a constant problem recruiting. We've got a team of recruiters out there now that are, you know, every way we can try to get somebody, we're looking at. But it's been a long, long time that we've been shorthanded.
Do you feel with our benefits, pay package, so forth and so on, that we're competitive with other agencies around the area?
As of right now, Oak Island Police Department is competitive with other agencies. I think we've all seen in the news, there's a lot of, a lot of pay increases coming from other counties and towns and things like that. And we'll have to look at ways to enhance our package to be competitive with them.
Okay, thanks, sir.
Regarding competitive with other towns, do other towns have the body and car cameras? Are we competing against that when we go out recruiting?
Yes, sir. Everybody across the board has pretty much the same thing.
Do we also have the body and car cameras?
Yes.
Just need new. Chief, if I can ask you about beach patrol, and you said possibly, thank you, Frankie, and you said possibly, two people on beach patrol, how will that be executed?
So as we, okay, so today is Friday. Oh, this past week, we have conducted numerous interviews for civilian or non-sworn beach patrol. So this summer, and we can chime in on this, you know, a little bit later. However, we are going to have non-sworn civilian staff on beach patrol this season. Now, however, that does not take away that we are still going to have an existing police officer there as well. So when I say one to two, that's where that's...
One to two sworn police officers?
No.
Okay, so total.
Yeah, total. So we are, we're still working out the logistics of that. We conducted the interviews today. So once we have that personnel in place, then we will train those personnel in interaction with the beach population and also with writing citations.
They will have the authority to write?
They will have the authority to write citations. However, an existing police officer will still be in that mix as well.
So the, let's stay on enforcement for a minute, because this has been a recurring theme in terms of what the citizens have demanded. So, and I understand that you only have so many officers. I would suggest, Mr. Kelly, that when this sorts itself out, that we come back and remind the public that we do have a plan for enforcement of parking, for enforcement of beach violations. I think the Assistant Chief laid out the way he would structure that. That seems to be what we're doing. But I'm not sure that's penetrated the public consciousness. And I think the important thing, we have some disagreements about the amount of the fine. Councilman Martin would have a greater fine. To me, the most important thing is people who are tunneling, who are on the dunes, need to be cited. Period, end of story, no warnings, they get cited. And those citations need to appear in the paper and need to be spread word of mouth, and our problem will be, well, ameliorated if not eliminated. So this enforcement plan, which involves police and civilian, that needs to be re-presented. And the drone, everything that we're doing to maintain an orderly beach environment to prevent damage to our dunes, right? Just make a footnote to come back to that at the end of this process. I want to, if there are no other, I want to ask about the equipment. Now, the way I'm reading this, this equipment is stuff that you have, but you want to upgrade it, and we're offsetting part of the cost here, Mr. Kelly, with APR money?
Yes, sir. We're going to use all the ARP money to, I mean, not all of our ARP money, but we're buying it with ARP money, nothing out of the tax. Body cars and cameras, purchase of the radios. The radios, we've been talking about for the last few years, whether to buy them now or wait until 2025 when it's time to buy them. Now that we're able to utilize these funds, we're looking at utilizing these funds to be able to purchase that.
I'm fully supportive of getting staff. People are the most important thing, especially trained police officers who understand the mission, without question. And we need them today, we need them tomorrow, we'll need them five years from now. There's no question about that. The equipment's another matter. I would urge this, that when we discuss the ARP funds in the aggregate, right, council then gets to see what the recommendations of the administration are, and then we get to decide whether we're going to approve those. Because right now, on paper, you're paying for this out of ARP, but council as a whole may decide to go a different direction with ARP funds. So just with that caveat, Chief, there are other needs and other departments, and how this ARP money gets allocated. It is possible you won't get all of this equipment. You might get half, you might get none of it, I don't know. Because I haven't seen the ARP fund layout. So again, this equipment, current equipment is end of life, or...
The radios, you're going to have to buy in 2025, no matter what.
Okay.
Either using ARP funds.
That's three years down the road, okay.
Taxes, whatever you want to use.
What about the, what about the body cameras?
Body cameras, they are, well, the storage and the equipment themselves needs to be replaced. We're having to come in, or they're having to come in, change out the radios, change out the chargers, and that equipment is just basically worn out, the life of the equipment.
Okay, so that's end of life?
The tasers are the end of the contract. The warranty on those are ending, so that's pretty much end of life as well.
Any other questions before we move on?
I just had really a general comment, not necessarily a question, because, Chief, I know you're new and greatly appreciate it. I support your narrative around the importance of personnel and staffing. I've lived and breathed this area for many, many years, so I completely understand the approach, not only by yourself, but that the Assistant Chief has been incorporating over the years as we've been short-staffed. My only comment would be is mutual aid from the county. I'm not aware of what our previous relationships have been with the sheriff's office. I know they too are short-staffed. I would only encourage both of you, if you're not already doing so, to continue that relationship with the sheriff's office around mutual aid. They do have coverage for our area 24/7. And they, I believe they're willing to help when they can. So hopefully, that's just a relationship that we've been developing and will continue to develop going forward under new management. The other comment is more aligned to my colleague, Councilman Robach. We really probably need to take a look at the capital outlay for equipment. I understand there's some things that are end of life. Maybe some of the replacement vehicles, if we can make do another cycle with those. I see that they are high mileage, but maybe not to the point where, for example, the county may not be timing these things out on their books, whereas we're looking to time some of these things out on our books. So just be a little more, I don't know, sharpen your pencil, so to speak, when it comes to some of the equipment. I understand new equipment would be needed for new officers. I mean, that's a given, you can't avoid that. It's not like we've got an inventory of new assets sitting there waiting to fill new positions with. And then my last comment, which has just been my comment this entire time, so staff is familiar with this. I see, again, under our projected expenses for this fiscal year, that we're running short of what was budgeted for the year, right? So we have a surplus. So, you know, how does that surplus help us going into the new fiscal year without having to increase expenses, right? Because we did run a surplus for this fiscal year. So when I see a surplus, that tells me that we set a tax rate that generated enough revenue to generate this surplus in these departments. And your department is no exception. You're running a surplus this year, right? And there may be a story around that, and that's fair. But let's just be aware of that heading into the new fiscal year as well.
So they're really, to summarize, that has been your theme, sir, and I agree with that in this sense. And I've also mentioned this before. From my experience with budgeting and budget outcomes, what's important to understand is your burn rate. So the amount of money that you actually expended after you budgeted. Typically, it's 95% to 99%. If you're running at 100, you're running a reckless business. If you're running at 97, 98, you're highly efficient from one point of view. If you're running at 95, you're prudent, because you're providing a contingency. That's what we need to know to settle these questions. What's the burn rate? Let's say actual burn rate. The other issue here is the capital outlay that's recommended. It's up 20%, $700,000. What, why are we recommending an increase there?
The items that you saw...
That would be the cars?
Yes.
Okay.
And so go back to Councilman Martin's. If he looks at the list of vehicles, you'll see in one year, we bought 10 vehicles. That's because we kept pushing, pushing, pushing. And we finally had to buy 10 vehicles in one year. So if that's what council's direction is to go back to, then we can start pushing everything off to another year. But all we're doing is, like you said, we're pushing it to another year. And to rely on the next year's reevaluation to be able to recoup all these things, I think is sort of something we're not presenting to you, because it is items that needs to be either purchased or we get back to buying 10 cars in a year. That's why four years ago, when they said bring this capital plan to us, we tried to lay out expenditures. We're still trying to figure out and lay out how we're going to buy those 10 vehicles in that year. So we are trying to move the vehicles around to get less mileage every time we see someone's not tracking, or someone lives closer, or somebody's here on the island. We're moving that vehicle to them so we can stagger the miles, because we know that's coming, and that's what we're trying to do.
Well, and the other thing that's not factored into this, because I know you can't, and that's the lead time to actually take delivery on the vehicle. I know the sheriff's office right now can't get replacement vehicles fast enough for their resources. So they're really struggling with spacing out, you know, when delivery comes versus which vehicles are timing out at end of life. So I know that's not factored in here. So at this point, we haven't even ordered anything, right? So...
Nowadays, they only open windows now for us to be able to order something. This started during the pandemic. So everybody's trying to catch up to that magical window. So they're going to ask us in November, how many cars we want next year. Well, us, in our operations, I can't have Mr. Hatton sign a PO without funds being appropriated, council approving expenditure.
Right.
So that is the market that we're sitting here trying to adjust to. We have told them that we need cars next year. We have not issued purchase orders, but we did send an email saying we are asking council for vehicles. And they said, we just need to know how many vehicles you may need, so we can order them, somebody else will go use them if you don't get them. So we have done that. So we are trying to look as far ahead as we can. But like I said, the lease option is what we'll be looking at, probably in October, November for next year. So if we can get into the lease program, it doesn't help us as much with police, because they're different, because they have to outfit them and those kind of things. But it will help us in the rest of the departments to be able to get the vehicles. But I understand what you're asking is just, this started a year ago, and everybody is still trying to figure out how to get there. We're a small place, they're working with other larger places before they start to work with us. But we are working on that. It's not something that we can fix today.
Understand.
Okay, and before we leave the detail, remind me what the contracted services line item is for? What services are we contracting?
We'll turn to your...
Pardon?
If you'll turn to your line item page. I'll throw that for you. We actually updated it again this morning. And if you see the highlighted items, those are the ones that we're looking at spending ARP money for. We're doing the same thing as other municipalities are doing with their ARP funds while they have the chance to be able to buy a police fire. Well, those are the items that they opened up first to be able to buy these items in. I know it's been said that we'd like to buy a rec center with the money. We're still trying to investigate, see if you can buy the rec center with this kind of money. We also have stormwater projects that we earmarked the money for. So really, it's council's direction on how, what's their policy on how they want to spend the ARP money. We can give you all kinds of suggestions.
Absolutely, and certainly using that money for police is a warranted purpose. But what I'm saying is I want to look at the overall, because eventually, there's not enough money to give everybody something that would be augmenting their operation, because the money just doesn't go that far. One last thing before we go, Chief. I don't see any requests for additional armor or weapons, so I assume you're comfortable...
It's down there on vest.
On vest?
Yes.
You've got vests, you have rifles?
9100s.
They're expendable equipment?
Okay.
Ammo, replacement.
Yeah. Line up.
Okay, but that's minimal, okay.
If I can jump in. Chief, and I'm going to reiterate what Councilman Martin, Councilman Blaylock have said. I agree, first and foremost, we need a strong police department, we need a strong fire department, that should be our first. That should be our first priorities. At your request, is your major pain, lack of personnel? Not to, not to minimize your other needs, but is that your major pain?
Yes, I think right now, let me back up and answer that question, Councilman Craft. So over the past three weeks, we are at such critical staffing levels that Major Cook has pulled the Detective Division and started to cover the Patrol Division. So, and that's a problem. That's a problem when we have cases that need to be worked and we have victims that need to be contacted because, of course, that's who we work for. And so that's happening right now. So, you know, our current vacant staffs, we have two. We've got, well, currently, we have three. We were hiring, or Major Cook has hired an individual, and he starts Monday. So that will leave us with two vacancies. So with those critical staffing levels, we've got to keep patrol staffed. So we're pulling, you know, we're pulling personnel, you know, to accomplish that mission now.
Your request for Community Resource Officer, what would that job title be?
Yeah, so, and, you know, we'll back up on the Community Resource Officer. That is very important to not only me, but also to the entire police department. I have talked to officers repeatedly over the last two weeks. I've been in the community. That seems to be, you know, a very high priority for our community, our police department. And I can tell you that it will be a high priority of mine too, to have that, have that position, to integrate into the community. And there's, there's so many things here. And I know Councilman Blaylock was a Community Resource Officer for years. There's so many programs, there's so much that we can get involved with, with the police department if we had, if we had that additional position. So, but, you know, as it stands right now, you know, you ask, you know, where, where's the critical needs? You know, it's the Patrol Division, and that's first and foremost.
So the increases on your line item budget, expendable equipment, that increase is due to tasers?
Yes, so let me explain the tasers. A taser has about a five-year shelf life. After that five year, they become unreliable. So we are at that five-year mark, we are at the end of life for the tasers. And that's, that's why that is a, once again, that is a critical need for an expenditure item.
The only scary numbers I see are the automobiles. Walk me through the immediate need, if you would please, sir.
Okay, so right now, we have, we have three vehicles with over 120,000 miles. The first one is a 2011 Ford Explorer, a 2006 Ford Explorer, and those two vehicles are still used every single day. And we've got one more that has 121,000 miles. It's a 2013 Dodge Charger. So with the mileage, you know, when, when the car sits and idles and it's in the small town, this is completely different driving conditions versus getting out onto Interstate 40 and putting 120,000,000 miles on a vehicle. So those vehicles right there, they continuously, they cause prob- I've been told that they're constantly in the shop, they constantly need repair. I don't have those specific numbers. I'm passing on what I have been told about those cars. And they are, you know, those cars are towards their, end of their life.
And you have $75,000 in your line item for fleet maintenance. If there were to be new cars, there wouldn't be that much maintenance required. There's a trade-off somewhere.
I'm sorry, Councilman Craft.
So if you got, if the new cars were purchased, then that would come down some. A lot of this increase on these, also was the price of fuel.
Yeah. Thank you, sir.
Thank you. Thank you, Chief.
Thank you.
I'm sorry, Charlie?
I'm good. Thank you, Chief.
Thank you, Major. You're now a major? Okay.
I'll call you Frankie, I'll call you Major, I'm sorry.
Calling an Assistant Chief, okay. Thank you, gentlemen.
Chief, I have noticed, and maybe it's just me noticing, I have noticed much more visibility of our police officers around town. I don't know if that's to your credit or if I'm just thinking I'm seeing that, but.
One, one thing that I'll never do is I'll ne- never take credit for that police department. And the, the good work that they do, that I will champion that good work. And I will support them to, to, to no end. But thank you for making that comment, I will pass that comment on to them. But they are the act, the officers that are there, they're the actual ones that are doing the work. I'm going to support them 100% and, but I appreciate your comments. Thank you, Councilman Craft.
We're all in this together, I hope we can keep everybody strong.
Thank you, gentlemen, we're going to move on.
Thank you, Chief.
Thank you.
Mark, do you have to leave?
No, I'm good.
Okay.
If you don't mind me listening while I listen, multitasking, I can multitask.
Hey, as long as you're listening, it's fine.
I am.
Lisa, do we have the mayor?
I have not, no.
Okay, well, thank you, Mark, for multitasking.
So now we're going to get to Public Works. It is several departments. The very first one we have is 10-500 colored pink, Facilities Maintenance. It is in front of where you just were, Lisa. Now we're starting to get to the real departments in the town.
Proceed, sir.
Lisa?
I'm sitting right here.
I, I know, I'm sitting here too, but these are the real people. Yes, sir, so what we got in front of you is going to be like six departments. It's all mingled together in Public Works, but it's a different breakout. Scott's the department head over all these. And then we have some of these without being in the enterprise funds. We'll pick those up Tuesday, like solid waste, golf course, and those, we'll discuss those under enterprise funds. As I said, we're just trying to wrap up the general fund items so we can get some kind of direction, hopefully what council's wanting to do. So we'll start with the Facilities Maintenance Plan. Overall summary, as you can see, is up 20%. You can see the individual changes. Capital outlay, there is nothing in capital outlay for this year. Last year, the item was purchased. And this is one of the items that hopefully Councilman Martin will look at and go, well, we, we spent more than what we anticipated. We actually spent more than we had budgeted. So we're making some budget amendments. That's why I said we're getting into the, the real working class now, items need to be addressed. So there is no capital in this, no personnel, nothing fancy. Scott's here to answer any kind of questions you have. If none, we'll proceed to the next one.
Well, let's, let's touch briefly on the operating expenses, up 29%. I'm on the first page.
Well, I guess the reason for that, one, is price of materials has gone up significantly. And so that's a, that takes a big hit. We have aging facilities, HVAC systems are really taking a hit. And they're, we've had to replace several throughout the town.
The other big item, contracted services. I don't know if y'all have been aware, but we've had a leak over on the police side of the building for years. We kept trying to figure out where the leak was, and we finally had to remove some of the brick wall.
Which we have to do again, by the way.
Oh, we have to do again? But that is part of that money.
A bigger, the first part was kind of an investigative. Had to take the brick out to see what was going on with the membranes behind it. So they found it, now we've got to take a bigger area out, to actually solve the problem permanently.
Okay, I, I guess the, we have a different question here, you know, per what Councilman Martin has been focused on. Here, you spent more than you budgeted, which leads me to the question of, are you sufficiently budgeted here or do we need to go up? Because things, as you point out, Scott, do break down, are breaking down, are older, are aging. Are you comfortable with the numbers?
Yes, I think we're good on that because we've, we've upgraded a lot of things. So I think it'll start to go down. I've also, well, you'll see that in another section. But I've having buildings evaluated also. So that kind of gives me a better planning for the future. And got one in one of the next, one of these budgets that shows one of those needs, a new roof, so.
We started putting more into other departments to make them pay for themselves as well on the Facilities Maintenance. So we're starting to share some of that cost to get it where it needs to be.
Okay.
And you only have two people in that, this department?
Yes, sir.
And one of them is retiring?
August.
You'll just replace that person with?
Yes, sir.
Okay, we can move on, what's our questions? Are no, seeing no questions?
10-545, staying with pink. Public Works Admin. No staffing, no capital.
I'm just curious, and maybe this is just an aberration. In the previous account, we had salaries one up 8% here, they're up 9.2%.
Is this a dollar, I mean, dollar-wise? You'll see it on the personnel sheet.
Okay, fair enough. As I say, an aberration, okay?
Dollar reflects whatever total dollar number. These are pretty bones dry kind of things.
Bone dry. Fairly lean.
Yeah, the biggest on the expenditure side is the maintenance of the fuel system tanks.
I saw that.
That's, we have to have them inspected yearly, correct any problems. It also pays for, two years ago, we got a ECO's management system that talks, that the gas pumps talks to everybody else, so that comes up. We'll know when it's due for service and that kind of thing. So it's also a yearly fee for that.
How many tanks are being inspected?
We have, we have two tanks, unleaded and diesel.
$5,000 a tank, right?
No, that's just a portion of that.
Yeah, that's, that's a portion of it. The ECO's fee is a yearly fee based on the number of vehicles we have. So it fluctuates a little bit depending on how many vehicles we have.
But think, focused on tanks, it's, it's $10,000 line item. Are the tanks approaching end of life or?
We just had them inspected and we had to do a couple of repairs. Some of the spill buckets were wore out, but we've got that. So I think it's good for a while. But the next inspection next year will tell us more, so. And replacing tanks is a very expensive.
How, yeah, how old are the tanks, do you know?
Been here.
No.
Okay, put that on the list and we'll check that.
I don't know that one.
We'll check that.
It wasn't my department, I don't remember that one.
Way before my time.
Okay, all right, we're going to find out the age of the tanks.
Well, and this would be another area, perhaps, once we're in a position to move toward an electric fleet, that may be a more appropriate time to evaluate replacing these tanks because maybe we could downsize. I don't know what the capacity of these tanks are today. But if we move to an electric fleet, I understand we'll still need fuel, maybe not as much fuel held in reserve. So that may be an opportunity to look at replacing the tanks because we could downsize their capacity because now we're no longer supporting a larger fuel-based fleet. I mean, that, that analysis, I'm assuming it would come into play there.
Seven, 10 years.
Moving on.
Made the note, tank, 550, talking about fleets, fleet maintenance. You have a capital item in this, in this one that you'll see the reflection? And some additional $6,000 more of operating expense. Scott, can you go over the capital item?
Yes, we've got three, three capital items, two of them are replacements. The 4x4, it's a service truck and it's, what, what, what is on our current is, is fairly good equipment. So we'll just have to transfer like the air compressors and things like that. Reason it's a 4x4 is there are times they have to respond on the beach in different places. So want to make sure we can get out, police vehicles, beach patrols, that kind of thing if they get stuck out on the, in the sand. The Millermatic welder, it's just hit its lifespan and it's not, the cost to fix it is not worth the cost of the machine. And the other is the new item, it needs a new roof. I had it evaluated by a roofing engineer and looked at it. And his recommendation was to install a, it's a poly membrane type roof on it. So that's the, the cost you see there.
Tracy?
It's a fairly large, I don't know the exact square footage of it. And it's also probably one of the, one of our facilities that are closest to the ocean, it's over here. So it gets a lot of, and it's fairly high, so we can have sort of lifts and all. So it, it takes a lot of, a lot of beatings.
Again, if we could check the age of that? Because we're not totally, are we replacing it or just repairing it?
It's, it's, it's kind of a covering.
Right.
But it's the entire building, yes, entire roof.
So we're, would it be fair to say we're re-roofing it? I'm just trying to justify this numbers.
Correct.
Okay, so it's a new roof?
Got all the details from the engineer's report and.
Okay. So essentially, I, I can think about it as a new roof?
Yes. 20-year warranty wants us up there, so.
Thank you.
We have it defined as a roof replacement, 4,250 square feet.
Oh, yeah, sorry, it's right there in front of there.
Okay. Questions, gentlemen?
I'm good.
I'm good.
Let's move on.
All right, keep flipping, 570. Oops, excuse me, excuse me, 560, I'm sorry. Streets Department.
Oh, mercy.
Now, in this, you know, last year, we put in the extra million dollars for paving. That, this does not reflect the million dollars for the paving. It does reflect the pow bill money coming in. And it shows us putting the pow bill money back into a reserve fund to try to build up the pow bill to a significant amount. So then we can have a contractor come back in and, and do the paving. We used to save up three years' worth to get a little million dollars. So economy to scale when they come, we can get more bang for our buck.
So from my perspective, there are two issues here. Scott and I discussed the first one, which is the million-dollar benefit to the town has not been realized because the contractor hasn't delivered. So that's problematic. He has, he or she has until July 1, and we're going to try to light a fire under these people. Because otherwise, they're going to be paving in the middle of thousands of tourists, which is not a good idea. Second question is whether you should accumulate your pow money for greater impact, which is a theory that we've had before. My problem with that strategy is that our roads are in such disrepair that we were never going to catch up. So I would only support deferring and aggregating, accumulating if this contractor comes through and if you're confident that that strategy will work because we've got all of, or most of, or hopefully all of the terrible roads repaved. And we can live with the other condition.
The current contract, when, when they finish, finish it out, right now, we're in the, the evaluation that we're using now, we're in the, about the 85%.
Right.
So we're kind of, we're climbing to the much better roads. There's also in here for, to do that evaluation again. It's about $25,000 to do that. But the value of that is it gives us the new priorities and I- of that is it gives us the new priorities, and I think since this was done, it's a four, almost a five-year-old survey, and the past few years, we've certainly stepped up our maintenance too. We've got the hot asphalt patch machines, so it, it will be very interesting to see how they reevaluate all the streets. I think we'll, we'll show that we're stepping up in the conditions they are.
Well, quite honestly, the theory of the decisions that council made last year in expending the funds which were realized from debt relief, there were three priorities. One, the streets, the skate park, and sidewalks. And what is frustrating, and this is not directed at you, Scott, I have only admiration for the work you do. Frustration is DOT has tied up the sidewalks, so the public doesn't see the impact that we had hoped. And on the street side, the contractor is on vacation or whatever he's doing, and again, the impact has been blunted. So that's frustrating. That's just a personal comment, it's very frustrating.
It is for me also.
Yeah. On the strategy, if you tell me that we've reached a point of efficiency in repaving, that we can afford to aggregate the funds in our streets, we'll further decline, in fact, we'll stay at the eighty percent level. I'm comfortable with that if that's your assurance, but I want that assurance, because in the past, we, we'd go out with a large contract, but the streets had decayed so rapidly, because they were in a physical shape to begin with, you know, it was, it was just a losing cycle.
I guess my opinion on that would be that I would prefer to do the smaller contracts and keep rolling instead of letting them sit, because what that does at the end of their lifespan, then you have more streets. You kinda have to keep that strategy constantly, because at the end of, if you pave them all at one time, and then they all fall apart at the same time, so you end up just bringing that down the road.
I can support that. I, I think that the improvement of our streets has been a vexing problem that's gone on and on, and last year, we, we finally made a commitment, and I'm hoping that that commitment is realized, and then we can, if that's your preferred strategy, I'm comfortable with that, we'll pave every year, and continue to stay at the eighty-five or ninety percent level if we can get there, because there always going to be some streets that need work, always.
Because, I mean, utilities going in, even, you know, streets are always gonna be tough for one reason or another, and just the nature of deterioration.
Right. And on that, before we take any other questions, one of the things I've asked for in the past, and this has nothing to do with you, it has to do with developmental services, is that when a contractor begins work and he gets his initial approvals, we take a, a before shot of the street, all of the street, so that we can establish the baseline condition. And if the street is damaged before he gets the CO, he's gonna pay to repair it. And I don't see that being enforced. That also is vexing. That, that needs to happen, or we're constantly gonna destroy our streets. And I understand they need to get equipment in, concrete mix, fine, but if they're destroying the street ends, which they are, or damaging them, right, they need to, and that's, this is for you, Mr. Keller, that needs to be enforced, and it's easy. You take a photograph. I don't want to rely on the contractor's goodwill. Those days have passed. I want a picture, says this is what the street looked like, and they're gonna restore it to that condition. That's not for you, but that'll help your street problem.
Yes, absolutely, because it has happened on brand-new streets, so, brand-new paved streets.
Well, I, I can look at my own street, there, there's six new houses in the last three years, and all the edges of the street are destroyed, well, damaged. There's, there's pieces of the street that I'm cleaning up, and that's not right.
The three hundred thousand's there, we can move it to wherever council decides to go and do the paving, and just move it up to the operating budget.
The only, I'm sorry, the only downside to doing that is the larger the contract, the better, sometimes a better price they can give, or, you know, it's more of a bulk price, so you might get a little more mileage out of it on a larger one, but, like I said, I still stand with what I said before.
Yeah, well, I'm, I'm with you, but this is a council decision, so.
A couple of quick questions.
Yes, sir.
Is this the same company that we're dealing with now, started the project in the first place?
Yes.
And from a layman's standpoint, why did they, why haven't they?
Move forward.
What, what percent are they complete?
They're about fifty-five to sixty percent complete. What I get when I talk to them is other work, they've got, trying to wrap up some private businesses, so what that tells me, they've got work that they're getting paid better for, you know, not right, but that's the reality of it.
Do they have a track record?
They are a very well-respected company. They've actually moved up in the past few years to one of the top level in the area. I mean, they're right there with Barn Hill and, and the rest of them, so they are.
The work they've done is, is, have they solved the issue of, because when they put it, first put it down, it was okay, and it, it's gone down now. Have they, have they solved that problem of compaction or whatever you would call it? I have no idea.
Yeah, that is, that's part of the contract, is it's evaluated whether it needs the crack sealed before it's paved, so that doesn't transfer up through and the, the dips, so cut and patch kind of thing, and then overlaid, so, yes.
Thanks, sir.
We'll get the copy of the contract back out and look, and on the next contract, we'll put a timetable, and then put some kind of liquidated damages on the backside. I know that drives the cost up on the front side, but at least we'd have a guarantee that it'd be completed within that year frame.
Thank you. Other questions?
Another company that's in the area now that we can also talk to.
If I can ask you, Scott, and you're probably tired of me always saying this, but I, I think you do tremendous work. Your department keeps this island in tip-top shape. Replacement vehicles, did you have replacement vehicles last year? I know you asking for any in twenty-three, twenty-four, but in twenty-four, twenty-five, you made, but right now you're asking to replace the Dodge Ram truck.
Correct.
As well as the asphalt roller. Did you have replacement vehicles last year?
We had, um...
I don't have last year's in prime yet. I think there was one.
I think there was one pickup truck in last year's for this, for this department. Yes, sir.
It'll be, it's a, it's a order thing, you know, get here.
Yeah, it's been very delayed and aggravating.
The asphalt roller, does that allow you to do some of the work instead of contracting it out?
Yes, sir. We have one now. This is a replacement for what we have, because, I guess, three years ago when I came here, one of the first things we did was purchase a hot asphalt trailer that we can actually do, and this needs to, this goes with that.
I didn't turn that off.
Yeah, but this, the first year we did this, this would have been like, now you see it's in twenty-two, twenty-three, before it was in twenty-four, twenty-five, like it, it's, it's worked its way up to...
Yeah.
Yeah, it's pretty rough. The drums are very pitted, so I'm not getting the, the surface that I would prefer.
You know, last year there was a request for four vehicles, and I think we only funded two of them. There's a van for maintenance.
Yes, that's been received.
There's a vehicle for the golf course, and two for, one for Public Works and one for Solid Waste, and I think we funded two of those. Is that correct? Yeah.
Right.
Well, I appear to have a lot of vexations, vehicles is one of them. I'll leave it at that. Other questions?
Just a, a general comment. If, or regardless of our theories and approach for street improvement, whether it's, you know, hold back, have a skip year, and, and use the power of the dollar in economies of scale to, to get more done, or whether it's, we pave every year using what we can out of the PAL bill funding, I think this is a, an important, public, a very important and visible public concern. Whether the street is in disarray or not, this seems to drive a lot of conversations out in, in the public. Even when we publish the schedule online, we still get questions, well, when's my, you know, why isn't my street the next one, right? Or if, if they do a street, they only do half of the street, and, and there's some, you know, patchwork on the other portion of the street. So, going forward, I think it's important for us to have, or maybe reevaluate our communication plan to the public. So, you know, what is our response to inquiries on, on streets? I've been deferring people to your website. I, I try to drive everybody there.
And I've talked to many citizens.
Right, and, and I know you're active out there trying to respond to as many people as you can with all the calls coming in. So, if posting the listing of streets online isn't working, right, maybe we need to reconsider how that is communicated, right? So, how do we respond? How do we communicate our plan? Just so there's more awareness. And I think redoing the survey is, is critical as well, right? We take, we took care of a lot of the problematic areas, so now we've, we're down to a much smaller scope of work of what's truly problematic and what's operating just fine. So, I think a lot of effort in that area would go a long way too, so just something to consider.
And I think when, if we do do the new survey, we can put that online too, and people can look their street up, see what the percentage rating is and where it stands in the, in the whole big picture.
That'd be helpful.
And the reason why we went to that years ago, we had a plan, staff did, and we were paving roads. We get a call from a council member saying, Mrs. Smith called, and then we started having to pave roads. And so we did this to take it out of every, your hands, take it out of our hands and put it into a third party, to make sure that we're doing what actually needed to be done.
Yeah, I think my colleague has an excellent idea, much like the enforcement plan that earlier I asked you to republish and reemphasize. I think Mark is right about, um, street paving, that, you know, some people will go to the website, but other people just look at their own street and say, why not? And I'm constantly asked by my neighbors, how come, you know, your, our street isn't being paved? And I'm saying, I don't make that decision. So, the fact that we have a third party, it's like base closing, you know? No one could close a base until we had a commission, so we have a commission. The real issue here is the contractor, because if he completed the other fifty percent, people could not avoid seeing the progress, right? That's, that's part of the problem here. And whether we go yearly or not, you know, is less of an issue than getting this major project done. So, that's...
In our, in our last, when we put the last bid out, unfortunately, we don't get a lot of responses. A lot of people aren't interested, so it kinda drops it down to, to who we able to deal with, so.
And that, and that's gonna be even of greater concern, I think, if we do decide to go to a, a yearly paving program using the PAL bill money at a hundred percent every year, it's gonna be even more difficult to find contractor to, who's gonna be willing to do the work, so.
We didn't get enough bids the first time we bid it last time, then we had to wait the seven days and re-advertise, and we still got that one bid. But I got a note to call the guy.
Oh, I, I was gonna call him this morning, but I ran out of time, so.
Okay. Are we ready to move on, gentlemen?
Yeah.
Okay.
Now we get to go to five seventy. This is, originally this started with having, we had put in for two personnel. Also, back in the Streets Department, we had put in for two personnel back in the first meeting. We heard council's discussions, we talked with Scott, we talked with staff, and we took those positions out of the, out of the budget. Scott had two people in here in operations as well. We have taken out one and have kept one, just to do the workloads, and we still believe that that one position in Public Works would be needed within the operations to be able to keep everything functioning and operational as we have. That position picks up a lot of the extra work on, on town facilities. Those around the Middleton Park, rec center, town hall, police station, little park next door. Also, they clean the bathrooms, keep all the bathrooms clean, so there's overtime, callouts and those things for those. Y'all probably aren't aware as much vandalism as we're having in their bathrooms. Tik Tok has a nice little thing where they go in and rip every fixture off the walls and video it and brag about it and take claim for it, and, um, so we've been trying to get those. We've been locking them at night. We're having to go to porta-johns, uh, just because of all the vandalism that we're having in our bathrooms.
Up to, close to three thousand dollars just in replacement equipment, that doesn't count the time and labor to put them in.
And we haven't caught anybody yet.
No, we have put up some cameras and things like that to try to catch them. Those two or three weeks, they didn't do that one, they went to another one. So, they're either pretty resourceful, or they do monitor themselves.
Got an inside track.
They're having the same problem at Bill Smith Park. We're having to lock those bathrooms up. We're only opening them if they're having a van or something at the park, because they were, they liked the changing stations at that place.
Yeah, we've replaced a few of those and out back here too.
Take them and put them into the little pond we have there at the Bill Smith Park. So that, that's some of the issues that we're currently having, but I wanted to let you know about the operations person. We also had a zero-turn mower in there in capital. We've removed that as well.
So the additional person would be a generalist, is that assigned as needed?
Looking for enhancements to what we do around the parks and the town buildings and all, instead of just the basic stuff we get from the contract, you know, like we talked about, it's the detail stuff. These guys can keep, or this personnel will help be able to keep things trimmed up and replaced out, like at the Nature Center, all those walk boards that were through there, that was a trip, that's why we pulled all those up, mulched them. So this, this would help enhance things like that.
I'd like to talk about the sodium lights for a minute, the street lights. Is that replacing all the street lights?
That's, no, that's not a replacement at all. That's paying the, the bill for them.
Oh, okay. So we're, we're showing that as a cost? Yes, yeah. Let's talk about street lights, because that's, there's been some discussion publicly about our lighting is inadequate. How old are the lights, and can we do better at some point? I know this is a future capital item. Your thoughts on the street lighting?
It's kinda sporadic around the town, I think. The street I live on has no street lights whatsoever. Some have them, some don't. I don't know how that was decided or where they wanted to be put in, but I kinda, I think we could probably use more. I mean, I get calls about it, get requests from citizens asking to have lights put in, but that's a...
Back when they put in the underground utilities, I don't remember what year that was, but a long time ago, wherever, if Mr. Bach had a street light out in front of his house that he was paying for, then the street light was reinstalled there. But all the corners, intersections picked up the street lights. I'm sure Brunswick Electric has a shelf life with the aluminum poles, aluminum fixtures. I know Castle Beach went through a renovation, they changed all theirs out la, last, I think it was last year. So we can address that with Brunswick Electric and see about whether, I, I don't even know the life expectancy of their current light picture.
I would say that this is an item for the future, obviously. It will be a sizable number. I will tell you that the complaints that I get are that I can't see the street signs, the, the illumination's not adequate, part of, I guess, a significant part of the west end doesn't have any lighting at all, right? Ocean Drive is difficult at night, and so on and so forth. I, I think we should talk to Brunswick Electric and do the preliminary study. If we wanted to improve our lighting for safety, how would we do it? What would it cost? And that's a future capital item. But being able to see, and see at night, as our population expands and we have more traffic, seems to me would be an important consideration for the future.
And there, there's so many different types you can have now, stood as sodium type, they have LED that gives them much better coverage, soft lighting, things like that, so I think it's, I agree, certainly worth looking into.
Well, in, in some occasions, I've seen in other municipalities where in between the larger, I call them the tower lights, the ones that operate at a significantly higher elevation to cast a broader light, they can put in like an interim... elevation to cast a broader light, they can put in like an interim lighting, uh, opportunity in between those, uh, that's more lower level for things like street signs, uh, and whatnot. And, um, I, I don't know about Brunswick Electric, but I know in previous, uh, efforts working with, um, Duke Energy and, and Duke Power, they've been very willing to help local municipalities cover some of the cost of installation and, and upkeep, a, as long as you pay your bill. So, um, you know, they'll, they'll, you know, in, in some occasions, they're happy to put in an extra light post if they know that you're going to be paying the electric bill for it. So, um, so hopefully Brunswick Electric, I, I really don't know a lot about them, and I don't know how cooperative they are and how incented they are to get things done. I know we keep adding electric charging stations for vehicles, and they've put those in at no cost to us, so, uh, it'd be nice to come up with maybe a new lighting design and get them to partner with us to help facilitate that, because I, I would agree, there are some areas, um, in the, in the town that lighting is, is poor, um, and it's, it's difficult to have visibility at night. And if we could incorporate it into any initiatives we have around sidewalks and greenways, lighting is going to be critical for those developments as well, so.
And before we leave this, um, safety is the first priority, first and always, but there's a real opportunity here to change the aesthetic of the town.
Yes.
You know, what it looks like, especially at night. And every one of those light poles is an opportunity to display the beauty of Oak Island, which we do during the holiday season, but we could put banners up all year long and, and other signage, and we could make it more interesting to be on the island. So, you know, for, I suppose at some point, we, we had a corporate partner, public partner, and we were moving forward, uh, we could then think about it, not just from a safety point of view, but also from an aesthetic point of view. Like when you arrive on Oak Island in the, in the, um, Christmas season, it's, it's festive, right? It feels festive, the lighting is festive. That could be year-round. Um, it'd be like arriving on a college campus and you see the banners. There's a lot we could do. If we change out the lighting, let's not lose sight of the aesthetic dimension, something else to think about.
Not in other states, I know where I've been, there's, uh, in one particular one, they had a legal, they had a problem. Someone sued the city, and the reason they did was because it was an area that was not well-lit. Does the, does Oak Island or does the state of North Carolina have a requirement for so many lumens, so forth, in certain areas, or is it just?
Honestly, I don't.
I, I know our ordinance addresses it, if we want to, business comes to the town and what they want to put in their parking lots and stuff, I'm, I'm sure there's something that says minimum required lighting at intersection or something, but, um, I made a few notes, DOT and BMEC to talk to them about all we can and can't do.
We good, gentlemen?
I'm, I'm good until we get to, uh, contracted services on mowing. I thought we were taking that over ourselves.
If you would like us to add the individuals back into it, there's only a portion that we are going to be taking over.
So we're still paying two six?
The town's building and parks, more just to top them would be what, the right-of-way was still.
Right-of-way would still contract out.
Only thing we were looking at taking back over was the Middleton Park Town Hall Rec Center and the Middleton Park right next door.
Questions, gentlemen?
Um, yeah, I had a question. The mosquito control, um, program, do we have any statistics available on the success of that program? I, I mean, I, I see the truck in, in the, in the mosquito months, uh, you know, driving around in spring, um, but I, I still supplement that with my own personal contract. My wife and I make the decision every year to do a contract for our own property, um, which we've experienced success with that program. But I, I, I do get questions from, from residents about the program that the town, uh, uses, uh, from the street, right? You, you, I, I, obviously you can't enter someone's property, um, but I don't know, do we have any statistics on how, how successful or that may or may not be?
We follow the county's recommendations on how and when to do it. It's, um, certain times after a rain, um, what time of day to do it, because there's certain mosquitoes that we're trying to get and other ones aren't a problem, apparently. Personally, mosquitoes don't bite me, so I don't have that issue, but so we've, we follow the county.
Yeah, the county, also the city of Southport, they, they just went through this, they had a presentation, the county came and made a presentation with them, and basically they told them they are doing the study, they're keeping up with the larva, they're keeping up with everything with, around the community, and if they see an outspread downstream, they'll let, you know, the additional towns know, hey, you need to start watching for this one. And they'll come do a, a count, they'll set up the traps, and they'll, they'll give you a count in certain bodies of water, and that's when they let Scott and them know that they need to. We also take our machines to get calibrated there, they do our continuing ed. Everybody works centrally, sort of, through the county's program.
Yeah, all the guys just went to class yesterday, had the, the machines calibrated, so we do that every year.
We could ask the county what the effective rate is, because they keep those stats.
Um, and then the last question around the mosquito control effort, um, I've also received several questions about, um, the health hazard, if any, that the chemical that's being sprayed presents to, uh, people who may be out on the street, you know, walking or jogging or have their pets out there, walking on the street. And I, and I know it's probably asking too much to publish a schedule, because you just explained that you follow guidelines around, well, when did it last rain? What time of day is it? What's the temperature going to be today? So there's a lot of moving variables that would dictate when you do the control. I don't know if there, if it is economically feasible to get some sort of either, you know, pilot signage or car out in front of the truck to warn people that you're, you're coming down the street, so to speak, so they could divert their plans. I mean, obviously today, if they see it coming soon enough, they can divert to a side street, but like, um, the people that run the program at our personal property, you know, they, they basically tell me, we're coming today at 10 o'clock to spray, don't go outside for the next, I don't know, two hours or whatever, or keep your pets indoors for the next two hours. So there are some protocols that they initiate, what, what are we using and what's, how could we help assure residents that, hey, we're coming today or something, you know what I'm saying?
Know what Southport just did? We have a thing called e-notification that Mike runs.
Okay.
And what they are doing, Indigo Plantation in Southport, they want to know when they're coming, so they have, they notify Indigo saying, hey, we're getting ready to come in and spray your streets. What they've done is, uh, anybody from the public who, if Mr. Martin calls and, or sends an email, says, I want to be notified when they're spraying, then they send out an e-notification of locations that they're going to spray that day, or the day before, or, they, they try to do it within 24 hours. That is one thing they've done. And also they have a callback program, but right now the, the list is starting to grow, so the callback program for them is becoming time-consuming. Um, but a lot of people, the beekeepers, um, certain people with outdoor pets, they have made the, you know, calls, asthma people, they've called, and they get on the list, and Southport's trying to either email them, text them, and Lisa, do we ever go to that text?
Um, no, that's still in the works.
We, we're getting ready to go to a text notification as well, so we can notify you by text, something's happened or something's going on. Um, and that's something we could incorporate, where they'd have to get on a list, and then Scott would get in touch with Mike, Mike would broadcast on that channel, then Mike would send out the text to notify everybody that we're spraying in these 10 streets. If we don't get done, we'll be spraying the next day, but there is those kind of programs that we can look at today.
Okay, that sounds good. And we also.
A lot of information on the website, I was just looking about the spraying, about the chemicals that are used, contacts to, um, the North Carolina Cooperative Extension, um, when, when the spraying is done, which is typically between 6:00 PM and 11:00 PM, Monday through Thursday, all that is on the website already.
And they are, the protocol for the driver, they have a switch inside the truck that they can turn the spray off. The machine's still running, so sometimes people think that they're, they're still getting sprayed, but they're not, they, they just hear the machine. So if they're coming up on somebody walking down the street, within 100 feet, before they get to them, they'll switch off the, uh, the spray, so they're not just riding by and fogging somebody. And we also have lists of beekeepers on the island, different things like that, so we do not spray around those areas.
Okay, good, thank you.
Capitol Outlay Question, Scott?
Yes, sir.
Uh, I know the F-450 Super Dump Truck is a 1997 model, and the four, four-by-four tractor 1990 model, but the dump truck has 74,000 miles on it. What's our need to replace that this year?
It is fairly rusted out, um, a lot of different issues with it, and it's low mileage a lot because it's, they use it to pick up trash and different things, so they don't do a lot of traveling, so they're just doing enhancements wherever they're at on the island here, so, but it, it's an, it's, it's a pretty rusty.
Yeah.
I mean, we have no indoor storage facilities, so everything we have sits in the elements every day.
Uh, and then the Phase Two for Southeast 20 and Southeast 9th Street, FEMA paid the first part, we're looking at 515,000. I thought they were completed.
They were both at about 50%.
They're complete for the FEMA project.
Yes.
Okay, they're, they're usable right now?
They're usable, then you still have from where the FEMA stopped to the other side.
And that's the reason why Southeast 20th is closed on the other side right now?
No, it's actually back open. What we did, that was closed because on the other side, on the 19th side, we had a, there was a lip getting onto it, so any handicap people were having trouble getting over it, so we, we closed it for a day so we could pour sidewalk to, to stop that problem. But yeah, we opened it right back up next day.
Yeah, I got a call on that one, of course.
That's the one the public's been requesting, they keep calling and saying, when are you going to finish these? Do one this year, one next year, what?
One more question.
Sure.
Um, so similar to our philosophy when it comes to, uh, heavy equipment in the fire department, um, any chance we might be able to find a gently newer model-used dump truck, since it's not a everyday piece of equipment that we use?
Well, it's everyday, it's just not a lot of high mileage on it. They do, they do use it every day.
Just a observation.
Oh, yeah, absolutely.
I mean, when it, when it comes to, to, you know, SUVs and, and pickup trucks and cars and things like that, I know it's, we might as, we're better off just to go ahead and get a new one in here, but when it comes to heavy, heavy equipment, um, that usually start getting expensive, if, if there's availability in the gently-used marketplace, if we could take advantage of that, plus you might get something faster than waiting for a new piece of equipment to arrive, so.
Certainly possible, certainly.
Can't leave without, um, asking about leaf collection and the grapple trucks, are they up and running?
All but one of the grapple trucks are up and running.
Okay, and is that one?
It's in shop getting repaired, there's a, a motor leak, a gasket on the motor needs to be replaced, so.
They're our favorite trucks, absolutely.
They are the bane of my existence, but.
Didn't see the leaf truck.
Oh, yeah, it's running, we got it running.
They picked up mine the other day, I'm out there cutting now, trying to get some more to put out there.
Thank you.
Okay, and futuristically, it's let's say five years out, are we going to have to replace this, this equipment?
Yeah, it's in the, it's in the three-year.
Solid waste budget we were coming to have.
Okay, so it's in the next, all right. Can we, we're, good, gentlemen?
I'm good.
Both sides of me? Okay, let's move on. That's it?
That's the last one.
Where's yours?
So, um, I'm going to mark and I'll just, I'll give you another tally sheet. At some point, as a goal this year, when it fits into Scott's schedule, we're going to try to do some kind of a preliminary lighting assessment. And Mr. Kelly, I, I'd like to see an enforcement plan for these edges of streets with contractors, and I, as I recall, we agreed to do that, and I don't.
You did.
I don't see any evidence that it's being done. I mean, I walk around the corner, go down 40th Street where there are two new homes, I can see the damage that are right away in, in the street, I mean, it's plain as day.
We have, and, um, I sent a text a minute ago, that's where I'm heading next.
That's what digital cameras are for. And I, I think we may need, Lisa, if you would, just, we may need to change our ordinance to require this, uh, even though, you know, holding back the CO should be enough, but we should change the ordinance, that contractors are responsible. And you may want to talk to Brian about it too, not to needlessly complicate this, because what has happened in my experience on my street, which is built out essentially, there's one lot left, is the contractor said, well, you know, that's the cement guys, hey, I had nothing to do with that, or, or that was, you know, one of the subs, but, uh, to me, it doesn't matter. If the contractor is the one being issued the CO, then he's responsible for everybody he brings on that property. And as, as long as that's a legally solvent approach, I think we need to hold them responsible. Especially if the street is newly paved, then we're going to have, you know, we're going to undo the work we just did. So that's the, the two follow-up items I have, Mr. Kelly, and.
Should follow on the general contractor's shoulders to.
Should.
Control his subs.
Yep. Uh, are we ready to stand in recess, Mr. Kelly?
Yes, sir, I just got, I got something to hand you when you leave.
Okay, so we failed to connect with the mayor.
Yeah, correct.
And Councilman, Councilwoman Bell is not here, so at this point, I think we probably should stop.
One more question, if I may, I, I didn't know when I was going to ask this, if it was the Fire Department or the Police Department, but, uh, how are we using the drone operator going forward on the beach patrol or the Fire Department need?
When we get, you know, when we get to the accommodations, that's when the, um, discussion for the beach plan and everything comes back in, so we'll lay all that out for you, but we're looking at, uh, we did not put it in for full-time, we had administration the other day. We're looking at, uh, adding a second part-time person for the beach patrol and utilize both of those seven days a week to be able to assist with beach patrol. So we're looking at the value of, of full-time and a part-time, or the needs to have a full-time or to look at having two part-time, but we'll talk about that next week. I do need to look at your schedules to see if you're available next Thursday or Friday. We're going to need one more meeting. Sort of hopefully finalize, and you give us more direction on what you're wanting to see. And. I've been giving you a lot of information, but we're going to need some feedback.
We are meeting Tuesday.
Yes, sir.
Why don't we set that on Tuesday? I, I don't have my calendar with me, and I don't want to speak for Councilwoman Bell.
I'm just letting you know, we're going to need another meeting.
Thursday would be, work better for me, just as a heads up.
The other thing, uh, Mr. Hatton, in terms of follow-up, since we, we've discussed the, the rec department and we currently have the, the set aside of a million over three years, but I would, I would prefer to build it sooner if we could bond it at a reasonable rate, so you're going to, you're going to get us a quote. So we can at least look at that as an alternative. And if there are any updates to the list of personnel that have been requested and vehicles, which we have, I believe we have it all.
You have every, yeah. The personnel sheet, I haven't updated it, I'll have it for you. Use your, I'll put in your box after today, but you'll see the ones that we've already taken away.
Okay. Anything further, gentlemen, before I close?
So are we going to get a motion to recess until Tuesday?
Yes.
Motion to recess till Tuesday.
Second.
All in favor? Session is closed.